Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this, another couple of weeks progressed through this pandemic and then just thank you for your strength and guidance and for giving us glimpses of being, getting through this and seeing daylight in the tunnel. We're just so thankful for the businesses locally that are getting to reopen and for some semblance of returning to normalcy, but we thank you for being the God through it all and guiding us and strengthening us. And we pray for your wisdom tonight and to lead us to make decisions that reflect you in our hearts and for the hearts and the well-being of our citizens and our community. And we also pray for the policemen in not just this community, but throughout this country and everywhere in this world that put their lives on the line to protect others. It's amazing that these people, and we have them right here in our community, our officers, when they leave their home, there are no guarantees. And they're willing to put themselves between some of the most harrowing incidents, most horrible situations. They're willing to put themselves between that and us for our safety and for our protection, for our well-being. We thank you for them. We pray for your hedge of protection upon them. We pray for your guidance and wisdom upon them. And we pray for your comfort and strength upon their loved ones. We give thanks to you and all these things. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, oh boy. Jane, if you would take the roll call, it says connecting right now to get Monte back online so he can say he's in attendance on the Zoom.
Brandon Elmore.
President.
Bob Leage.
Here.
Nathan Coffin.
Here.
Tim Hice.
Here. Tito Frias. Here. All right. I trust that you have had an opportunity to view the claims and the minutes from the past meeting. And I would entertain any questions, and if not, I might entertain a motion. Yes.
There was a repair on the sweet shop for $2,350.
Correct.
I was just curious, what, did that take place before the sale or after?
Yes, yeah, it's still in our possession, the building is. And that is for, basically it's for economic development purposes. It's actually creating an opening between the two buildings because the businesses are going in together, operating, not, I mean, they're two separate businesses, but they're collaborating, is a better word for it. And so it's, it's there's a steel, basically they put a steel frame in, did they not?
Steve. They put a steel header, I-beam header across the bricks that they took out and then they re-bricked. So it, I mean, you can see the new brick versus the old brick, but you can't tell that there wasn't, that wasn't natural or part of the building. And it was basically to share access to the missing rooms bathroom.
Ah, okay. So it was a cost-saving measure at the end of the day, but also a way for them to collaborate still. Good question. I'm sending, I apologize, I don't mean to be rude, I'm sending a message to Monte trying to get reconnected. I may have to call him. Any other questions or?
If not, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a first, we have a second? Tim by here, I think. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Consent agenda approved. Then next would be the department reports. And as far as my end of things, again, it is Police Week. Really, it's almost like Mother's Day and Father's Day and all the other days or weeks of the year that recognize people of very special stature. There shouldn't have to be just one day or one week to recognize someone who does just an awesome, God-sending job. And so we're thanking for our police. And if you see them this week in public, thank them. You know, and just know that it's, we take for granted, when people get up in the morning, you know, what they do. And it's just, it's awesome. It's pretty awesome. So we appreciate our policemen and so blessed. And then as far as the Ball State presentation that occurred a couple of weeks ago, we finally have, it occurred last Thursday, not this very past Thursday, but Thursday before, I think. And we're trying to get, I've got the box account, I don't know if you guys are familiar with box accounts, but it's the presentation, I've tried to share it with all you guys. So if you have any problems linking into that and to be able to see the entire presentation, and there's a lot of stuff. In essence, I think at the end of the day, it was like 150-page report on the Apothecary Building and the project that they did. It's very impressive. And there's also a rendering, I've also shared this with Brian Merrill and Kiss TV, and they're gonna try, we're gonna try to work out where we can show the presentation on Kiss for everybody to see, but there's a rendering of the picture of what the vision is for. Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's quite amazing. It's quite impressive. And this is what, there's one grant that's already been applied for, we will hear back, or hopeful we might even hear by the end of this month. It won't be official till June though. And then the other one's already in process. First one for purchase, second one for the actual rehab work. And so, yeah, pretty cool. And I got a great message, I think I forwarded on to you guys, from what JP, okay, cool. He was very complimentary. And the people, I don't know if you recognize the people, he copied on that, but one was the dean of College of Communications for Ball State, and the other one was the interim chair of the Tuck Communications Department. And then there was another individual, I think might have been his superior at the College of Architecture for Ball State. So the powers that be were privy to this project too. Very well received. Department hits. Did you guys have anything you wanted to?
Sure.
Okay, and I may put you on the spot, we should not on camera, so nobody has any idea of who I'm talking to. And Clerk Trezor, Jane, did you get anything? Okay. Council members, I do need to share for Derek Williams' behalf because he is not here at the moment. And he let me know why and gave good reason why. So I'll read you his text. Said, unfortunately, he's not able to join the meeting time because he had prior FFA applications to sit in on some interviews and help slate next year's Union City FFA chapter officer team. But he would like you to be updated on the following. The blood drive is scheduled for Friday, May 29th, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Dillon Williams Memorial Park. The blood drive is live on their websites. I'm not sure whose websites he's referencing. I assume the blood drive itself, they have a website. Does anybody know?
Where's that park?
Dillon Memorial Park, it's the baseball field back here. Yeah, South Side Diamonds, well, we grew up, known them as. But so, yeah, there are websites carrying this. People can begin to register on the websites for a time and to donate on the VERSITI website. So it's V-E-R-S-I-T-I. So I guess if you Google VERSITI, apologize if I'm butchering the pronunciation of that, you can get registered. And he said, I've sent a poster that I created to both Mr. Merrill and the high school administration to spread around the community as well regarding this blood drive. Because there is a blood shortage, I can speak to that. I know, at least on national level, there's a blood shortage. So if you can donate, May 29th from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. is a great opportunity locally to donate blood. Artwork projects, he said, Mrs. Marker has let him know that her students have created some designs for the front entrance board that we talked about, the entrance into town, and that he will be getting those email to me, or that she will. And then also, he's seen a few so far, and he said they look great with three ex, or two exclamation points. And then she also said that she's assigning her students the flag project, which, I don't know if I've covered this with everybody since this happened. When I tried to have the flags flown at half mass, I found out I don't have the authority to have the flags flown at half mass. I was, it was conveyed to me through a member of the military, a very distinguished member, the former military member here in the community, that only the president, the state governors, and the mayor of Washington DC, which I did not realize, have the authority to have the flags lowered to half mass. So I took his word for it. And so that, basically, I wanted to recognize or honor the passing of the Ohio mayor, Mr. John Fields. And out of respect and it got me to thinking too, all the people that we've lost in this community through the years that, you know, have served or, or, you know, just been significant pillars in this community. And it'd be nice to be able to honor them in a time of remembrance. And if we can't lower the United States flag or the state flag, we can lower our own flag. And cities do have flags. No real small communities in the state of Indiana, to my knowledge, have flags, but there's no reason that we can't. So there, I've reached out to the schools and they're working on basically some possible designs for us to review. And my cousin, Mitch Miller, who's a graphic artist down in Miami, he's a graduate of Union City, lives down near Miami, Florida, he has already sent me 12 possible designs and they're really cool. And so from those designs and whatever we gleaned from the school, we will put those together, we will come together with about three that we think are really eye-popping and really capture the spirit of Union City. And then I would like to put that up to the public to vote on the winner. And then we'll have our first official flag that I will ask you guys to adopt through ordinance, or resolution probably be it, I don't know. But yeah, and then we'll be able to lower that to half mass. And I also would love to use it for branding purposes. I'd love to have it, you know, flying obviously by the city building support, but then we could also use it like on Apache, they can do apparel with our flag and shirts and so forth and hats and everything. Just an opportunity to brand the community as well. But especially to honor, you know, to let people know that when we're honoring someone locally. So that's that, that's what he's referencing to the flag. So council members, Tito, did you have anything?
Yeah, just, most people announce things that are going to happen, I'm gonna announce something that's not. The Wall That Heals is a visit to the Winchester area that was planned for early June of the pre-empt replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And that has been postponed. They are already looking into dates in 2021 to reschedule that event to honor our Vietnam vets. And for more information, you can contact the Randolph County Veteran Service Office in Winchester. I have an email address for Michael Kennedy, who is, I guess, the director, I'm not sure of the title, vetadmin, that's V-E-T-A-D-M-I-N at randolph.in for Indiana, dot gov for government, again, vetadmin@randolph.in.gov. Also, I did have a couple of questions on the fund report. I didn't see anywhere that we had 2,300, nothing in there says $2,300, $300,000. So in the year-to-date expenditures. And so I'm wondering, where in our fund report have we reported on our payment for the settlement of the wind turbine litigation?
It came out of the legal attorney fees item, page three. Notice that there's a expenditure.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Are you talking about where is it in the dockets or are you talking about where is it on the fund report?
I'm talking about where is it on the fund report.
Page three, the appropriation report.
Oh.
Right here, sorry, about halfway down.
Okay, in the appropriation. Okay, I know it was in the appropriation report, I didn't see it in the other one.
He doesn't specifically list it because it's lumped in what else was paid out of legal attorney fees. But you can see that it's 1,300, we spent 1,373,000, $31.76.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay. Also had a question on the, that's okay. I already had a question on the 250,000 outstanding from Eco Vehicle Systems that they were supposed to reimburse for the Edit Fund loans. Do we, do we have anything on that?
On the, yeah, it's Kent Anderson emailed me, would have been middle last week, and said he should have something finally, should be resolved within the next week and a half because they had problems connecting because of COVID. And so they had to do some stuff remotely, but he said he should have resolution to that in the next week and a half. So definitely by the next meeting, we should have that put to bed finally.
Okay, good.
That's based on all the, yes, correct, yeah, employee on it, according to the contract.
Monte, can you hear me, brother? Okay, I'm so sorry. We'll just go audio because I was having connection problems on the laptop. So Tim, did you?
I don't have anything.
Nate?
The only thing I actually had was kind of a conversation piece. I had some conversations with Indiana DNR and a couple of other places about, Union City is a golf cart friendly community, making it so you can do what's called a side-by-side, is the, I guess slang terminology. Basically, it's like a two-seater off-road utility vehicle. Polaris out there, Brett Sales and Service sells them, two-seater, four-seater, three-seater, I mean, there's multiple different things. And was curious on council's idea if we were to potentially amend our ordinance to allow that. Thoughts?
If you've been listening to our dinner table conversations, we had the exact same discussion two nights ago.
Really?
Yeah. And I didn't realize that several communities around us have that authority. Portland, I guess you can do that. And there's a couple others nearby too, that you can have those on the street. And they actually, I guess, Kobe, this might be a great conversation entering in to, in terms of what your thoughts have been from a safety standpoint, because it sounded like they maybe offer a couple of features that even make them certainly equally advantageous as a golf cart to be on the street.
I mean, I'm not familiar with this type of vehicles, but I don't drive them. I do know they're not as safe as golf carts or, you know, I've heard them not being as safe.
In terms of?
How they're driven, how they're built. But again, don't quote me on that, I'm not an expert on ATVs versus, but I do know in state statute, they are listed as separate type vehicles. They're not anywhere close together. In Indiana state statute says you cannot drive them on a street.
Be for one thing.
Yeah, I know they're certainly faster, or can be certainly. Of course, they would have to follow the same.
My understanding too is maybe the type of tires and things like that that are on those type of vehicles could be harmful to the roadways and possibly if they're riding through parks or other places like that, they could also be harmful. I'm not secure or sure about the security systems on them as far as seat belts. I mean, but it's something that I'd be interested in looking into for the council and getting back with you guys. Like I said, I'm not an expert on the two vehicles versus each other. So.
They'd roll easier too. Yeah, I don't know either. I'm like you, I don't have one, I don't know anybody close to my family that has one. However, it come up, and it makes me curious if some communities locally do supposedly allow them on their streets, then what the stipulations are.
I think where you'd have to do, be careful is in the wording, because what you would end up with is four-wheelers and three-wheelers and things such as that, and not necessarily what I suspect that you're talking about are the, what you guys have used for work and stuff like that. So that would be what would have to be worded in an ordinance if you guys did make them. So again, I'll do some research and try to have it ready before the next council.
I was gonna say, if you want to talk to Ryan, he's already pulled what a couple other counties have done, or cities have done for their ordinance. I only know this just, I've got a family friend that lives on the other side of the state in Indiana, outside of Brazil, and they allow it. So I know some counties in Indiana allow it. Depends, again, it's how it's classified, what it would be, and this is just an idea. Essentially, I know we've got the golf cart imports out there getting a lot of business because of golf cart friendly. I think it would help another local business like Brett Sales and Service to enable our community to do it. And maybe it'd be a tourist attraction where people would want to come, camp at the park and.
It's been approached before, I think, not necessarily by council, but it's been asked by citizens and things like that. So it's definitely worth looking into and how we could word it to where it doesn't affect streets and properties. So I'll definitely research it and see what we can do.
That's awesome. One other thing I think that's to be looked at with that too is the fact that those have gotten more popular with the ag community. A lot of farmers are using those vehicles for various things and have the more utility-oriented types compared to the sport types that they use and would be apt to use in and out of town and so forth if they were able to. And I don't think tires or anything are going to be an issue on the streets, just a matter of the temptation to be, you know, they're gonna have to be an understanding about the fact that this is street use and not off-road or not off the street use and just because they're capable.
Not in the park.
Not in the park, not across the park. And probably the danger factor, or in terms of whether they're more or less dangerous than a golf cart, probably has to do more with the performance capabilities than anything.
They're more like a motorcycle. They have the bigger engines.
Oh, yeah, they definitely have bigger engines.
A lot of, a lot of those are capable of 60 mile an hour plus.
And noise, noise level too.
Well, actually, one of the things, when Nathan and I talked about it a long time, just kind of kicking it around, talking about the possibility, the one thing that I think has to be addressed is that exhaust noise, you know, that some of these people want to put, you know, it needs to be a stock exhaust system and so forth to remain responsible for communities. So we have to have some stipulations in there.
Absolutely.
But it's something to look at.
Appreciate that.
I have a question. Did you mention though that there was a state statute disallowing?
There is a state statute that actually defines those type of vehicles. And so, you know, it defines what a golf cart is and what they call an ATV. And the type of vehicles that they're talking about are considered an ATV, but so are four-wheelers.
They're classified as a UTV.
So that's the difference that we would have to look at and how we would want to word it in an ordinance. I'm kind of for it. I don't think everybody would, they're not as obtainable as a golf cart by most folks. So I don't think you would have like a bunch of them running around town. But again, to do it the right way, I have to do some research and can't get back.
They tend to be a five-figure purchase.
Yeah.
They go 10 to 25, 10 to 20, $25,000 from the top end. But one of the things that does, the UTV is going to, should be differentiated from any other ATVs by having rollover protection.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things you could use to eliminate four-wheelers or anything else, is that that has to be a vehicle with rollover protection.
The only thing I would want to check state statute on is that how it has to be registered.
Right.
Because it may, it may in fact actually be registered to the state, but I don't want to be quoted on that right now.
That's why I was thinking the same thing on this.
The weird thing is, is Ohio allows you to plate them.
Well, you have to plate golf carts in Ohio also. But in Ohio, with golf carts, you're also supposed to have a windshield, windshield wipers, you know, you have to have turn signals horns. So you might as well be driving a car. But, you know, again, I can, I don't want to speak specifically because I can't, but I will look into it and get back.
That's awesome. Thank you for that.
Just an idea, trying to find another unique thing to bring to our community.
Doesn't hurt to spark the economy as much as possible.
Yep. Other than that, I think, I think we're all hoping we get back to a little bit of normalcy here and everybody stay safe, use your hand sanitizer and mask so we can hopefully get through this this year. That's all I got.
Bob?
Just going back to the Apothecary Shop, the paint project, weather permitting, of course, but is that still in the process?
Yeah, yes.
So was the, was the rendering from Ball State anywhere close to?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Because that's a nice combination that they have on that picture.
Yeah. Now, the individual that was taking care of the paint, very particular. And so she actually had four colors that I think she was hoping to see used so that the detail would be brought out in the architecture. And then I need to reach out to Tom, to be honest, and I need to connect him, Tom Kearns, because he would be, they're doing the painting. Need to connect them with Dave Keizer, because he's our grant consultant lead. He originally was wanting to have the brick exposed, but he realized that that's not going to work because they put in different windows, so you'd have different bricks showing. So he goes, that's not going to work. So you have definitely painting is the way to go, but.
I believe when Dave was here and I stumbled into you guys, that one of the things he mentioned was, he really wanted to see some of the blocks, the stone.
Yeah, the limestone, Indiana limestone.
Some of the limestone blocks that are painted. And so he talked about blacks, exposing some of that limestone. I think that could be, like the color scheme, like what you're showing there, the limestone would be a beautiful blend.
Yes, yes.
It just struck me as, as just amazing when I saw that. That was really nice. If we could get anywhere closer, that would really be impressive.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's just a thought. I just threw that out.
No, but I appreciate that. Glad you have interest in it.
That's all I got.
Well, thank you. Brandon?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. So we were able to have the May meeting for the Randolph County Solid Waste Management Division. We did have some decisions, it was all done during a Zoom meeting, so we were all at a distance. But we were able to make some decisions on the scholarships and the community grants. I don't believe everybody has been informed yet, so I'm not going to announce what those will be, but maybe next time in two weeks I can, I can do that, share with the council who were receiving scholarships and community grants. The other thing, I know we had kind of a LinkedIn discussion two weeks ago about the Union City Swim Team, about the possibility of using the pool this summer. Unfortunately, actually just before this phone call, or before this meeting, I got a phone call saying that two additional teams beyond the ones that we talked about on Saturday are also canceling their season. So I think it's, we haven't officially made any sort of announcements, but it really looks like your decision is being made for us, that we're probably going to have to cancel our season as well. So, you know, just to let everybody give an immediate update on that.
I appreciate that. If Derek was here, I'm sure he'd be pressing you for the scholarship announcements early. Kind of love that man. Monte, can you hear me still?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Did you have any updates you'd like to share with the group?
Not really, just the sidewalk projects continuing and doing well. And that's about all we have.
No, it's a good update though, and it is indeed going well. So it's good to see that coming, coming along. And our city attorney, Mr. Ryan Prinky, did you, did you have anything that you needed to cover with the group?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, we have no presenters in the agenda, we're all business tonight, but we do have on the new business, 2008, or 2020-8 ordinance, which regarding the park hours. And this is the first reading. So I'm curious, what were you guys' thoughts in terms of this in concert with our discussion that we had?
I think it's fine.
And Ryan has reviewed some grants, Tito.
I got some feedback from saying that in summer, in the hottest, you know, the hardest part of the year, a lot of people play pickleball and basketball well past 10:00 p.m. in the park. And so my question is, is there some way we can allow that if the closing time, it used to be 11:00, our closing time is 10:00 p.m. and the idea there is that police can stop and question people? Is there something we can do, some tweak, some exception for a certain, maybe the hottest parts of the year, or something we can do to, I mean, because what we're doing there is curbing recreational activities that are available in our community. And there are some families that take advantage of that, might be too hot to play basketball in the day at some parts of the year, and so people play at 10:00 p.m., 10:30 even, and pickleball, which is I learned about from this person.
Does the pickleball and basketball outweigh the vandalism, you know, that has been done or could be done? I mean, for one hour, I'm not sure that.
My type of way, that would be if it's an organized sport and we give them permission to be out there as an organization, then it should be fine. If that's an organization, we're not going to open that up, because then you would have to move over to the basketball court and say, oh, it's fine if you're playing basketball at 10:30 instead of closing at 10:00. And then you'd move over to the swings and say, yeah, it's okay. Because then now you're just circumventing the actual ordinance that you just made. But like I said, any organization or anybody that has a special event that would maybe go on that they would want to, such as pickleball or. want to, such as pickleball or, I don't know, swimming, you know, that's, those are special circumstances which we talked about. We also have in the city where if there are special events that are occurring, you can fill out a permit. It doesn't cost anything. All it allows us to do is know that it's going on and it's law that way. And I believe that's.
I think that'd be the way to go.
A per, special, apply for a special permit. Was it two families will play pickleball?
It's, it's not, yeah. Well, with that in tow, I would say now it wouldn't be okay. I mean, if it's an organization, then yes, it'd be different.
Are those, are those areas light, what's the lighting hours on those? Are we leaving the lights on?
Yes.
I mean, they've got to be.
I'm a pickleball player.
Are they? There you go.
So are you the one that talked to?
But it did cross my mind, but the people I played with, I don't think we're out there until 11:00, so I'm not sure.
Well, they're saying 10:00 is what's being proposed. Oh, no, wait, it does say 11:00.
Except Christmas displays till 11:00.
Christmas, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was for Christmas. I'm sorry, it was down, I was wrong, wrong line. So 10:00 PM, so 11:00, would 11:00 PM be more adequate?
I think it's more basketball than pickleball as far as 11:00 PM.
Yeah, probably.
With younger, you know.
Yeah, because it's some kids out there.
No offense.
Well, I, you know, I, I see both sides. I, I hear Bob comment because that, that strikes my heart because I've spent so much time out there with the lights and, and in fact, I had another extension cord to take home this past weekend from going to work out there for my son to fix. He's been fixing all, we saved the extension cords because they cut the ends, but he could just reattach a male or a female end and fix them. So we saved our extension cords. But the lights, we were only able to save like eight different trees of lights because they still had the male ends, but, and the female ends were cut off, but we just, we, we secured the, the female, the loose ends. But when you cut the male ends, all of them were done. Yeah, so that, all those lights were trashed. So that, that hurt, you know, it still hurts, but at the same time I forgive them. So it's, you know, life goes on. But on the other end, I hear what Tito's saying too, because if you've got someone, I know there's some nights where, yeah, it's just downright brew during the afternoon and you don't want to do anything until evening. And the daylight in June.
7:00, it's almost 10:00.
Yeah, before it's actually dark. And so you've only, really only got an hour of dark that we're allowing if you just keep it up until 11:00. I.
Could we go back to 11:00 on the closing time?
I would not be opposed to that personally. What do you guys think?
I wouldn't have a problem.
Did the people that brought it up to you have any suggestions, hopes, wants, aspirations?
Good question.
Uh, none in particular, but just it's, that seems like a privilege that they've had that they wouldn't want curved. So I was thinking though, I mean, could we make an exception for like, I don't know, June? June is the, has the latest daylight hours. Sunset latest, it sets at 9:12 PM.
It's kind of confusing, Tito. I mean, you're changing times three to four times a year.
It's a little too specific. We're, we just say 11:00.
I would also say that, you know, you're, it's an ordinance, which is a civil violation when you're talking about law. And, you know, we're talking about spirit of law versus letter of the law. So, you know, it doesn't mean you're automatically going to write citations. You might ask people to leave. You might, okay, let them know finish up your game, the park's closing soon, you know, those types of things. It's not an automatic, you know. But what it does allow us to do is, you know, if there are people hanging out after those times, we can make contact with them because of the ordinance to know what they're doing.
That's a good point.
But I just want to reiterate, you know, any ordinance is, is a civil violation basically, and it's, it's written by the, the city fathers. And that's how it's enforced through us because that's how we're sworn in. So, and just, you know, letter of the law versus the spirit of law is what we'd be talking about here. And, you know, maybe you try it at a certain time now and see how it works out because it can always be changed or amended by the council itself, so.
Kobe, what's your thoughts on that? Like, you know, between 10:00 and 11:00, how much vandalism is actually going on, do you think? I mean, typically it's probably later in the evening, right? I mean, is what you would see?
Yeah, nobody does anything in broad daylight, I suspect. But, you know, a lot of times it, it's hard to give those times out. But most of the time that we've ever had any damage out there, it's been through the middle of the night. So, you know, in following what state statute is, like state for kids and their curfews and things such as that, I think 11:00 is closer to what the actual state statute curfew is. And if you also look in our ordinances, which mirrors that state statute, I think you would be setting about the right time at 11:00. So, I mean, it's, it almost mirrors that time.
I think it works.
Well, then, do I hear a motion with an amendment?
I'll make a motion for amendment from 10:00 closing hours in the summer, or summertime. I guess, what, April 1st to October 31st to, from 10:00 to 11:00.
And otherwise you would approve the ordinance as written?
Nope, it's as written as 10:00.
Just in the time, the closing time to 11:00 as opposed to 10:00.
Right, and then do we?
April 1st to.
You can make a motion for the, the ordinance and then with that amendment.
Okay.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
I, I want to mention something though. I mean, I think the purpose here is to prevent vandalism in the, in the dark hours. And if it goes clear to the end of October, sunset at the end of Oc, October 14th, I looked this up, is 6:37 PM. So if it's 11:00, we're talking 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00, you know, five hours of darkness when the police are unable to act. So, I mean, maybe some more nuance somewhere. I know, I, we want to make, I know what you, you mean, we don't want to make this too complicated, but we do want to reduce opportunities for vandalism. We want to keep our options for recreation open. We want to reduce, so maybe not go clear from April to clear October. I mean, maybe.
October 30th?
Personally like dawn to dusk, but I know it makes an issue.
Yeah, because it's always changing.
But at, at least it would be consistent with when we want people there.
True, true.
So September sunset, on September 7th is at 8:00 PM and at the end of the month at 7:22 PM.
Do we want to close it down a little bit then? Instead of, instead of November 1st to April 1st, we could go a month.
Yeah, we do.
September 30th till May 1st or something.
Sounds better.
Point of clarification, if people want to vandalize.
Yeah, they're going to.
Something written, they're not going to care.
We're not here.
No, but the thing is, this is limiting recreation for law-abiding citizens.
No, I, but my argument on the flip side is, if somebody wants to vandalize it, they may go out at 3:00 in the afternoon.
You're right. Or 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, so.
But Kobe's right.
For our law-abiding citizens, we don't want to restrict them.
They're not going to say, hey, you guys get out of here, you, and the park's closing, you know, so.
Well, I, I think we adhere to what Mont, or what Kobe suggested. We'd always amend it, amend it. We do have the first sets of cameras up out there and they are in active duty. And they're quite nice in terms of the clarity they provide. So, and again, we will not reveal their locations, but they do provide a really crystal clear picture. So unless you're the invisible man, you're going to be seen. So I would suggest, I was from the urge council just to stick with the amendment that Bob has suggested. And then we try this for a trial period and see how it progresses. And we can always go back to the drawing board and, and make changes.
We're going to stick with the 7 to 10.
Set, well, 7 to 11 during the summer.
We're going to go back to 11.
Yeah, the amendment you suggested to the ordinance, till 11.
Please stop causing trouble at the park. Call the manager.
And then, and, and just everything else that's written is what I would strongly urge you to, you guys to consider. So Bob, you do have a motion on the floor.
I second.
We have a first and second. Jane, if you would, with the God, grace of God.
Ryan, is it on or what? Okay, Brandon?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tito?
Yes.
And again, we can, let's revisit that. If you guys, you know, a couple months in, we, let's say we can go back to a well in that, we just.
So it's going to 11:00, a proposal?
Correct.
Because of the amendment.
That's the first reading, correct.
Right.
The first reading was the amendment that he proposed.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. Okay, now, I like the other op, the other option that you had mentioned is shortening what we're considering summer. So it's not April to October, but rather.
That's something that you.
June to August.
I saw your own down.
I mean, that's, those are the longest days. June is the longest.
The other thing to keep in mind with that, if you really want to get into this, is that, that the, the, it gets darker earlier in the fall and, and lighter, you know, the, the evenings are lighter, it's not quite the same. So that, so you'll have getting darker a lot earlier in the fall time before the time change as opposed to you see the daylight later. It's not quite the same. Have to look at that.
Exactly. Keep in mind, there's, we're out there a lot though in the fall, in the, in the, at night decorating. I mean, it's not usual for us to be out there until 9:00, 9:30, 10:00.
But you're an organization that's organized.
Before October, before the end of October?
Yeah, we is. Yeah, I started, I started the involvement.
So vandalism would be difficult to resist that because there's a lot of.
Like pickleball and basketball, they're going to be playing that probably till, or at least pickleball, because there is lights out there and the pool's cooler. So we would be out there.
9:00, 9:30.
Probably anyway through the fall, so.
I think we just leave it in November and, for now, anyway.
Yeah, I'd, I'd give it a shot and see how it works. Moving along, ordinance number 2020-09, which is the water deposit. And this is on the first reading. And basically what this says, well, and I'll just read the, the ordinance. It's amending Chapter 52, Section 53.22 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Union City, Indiana, whereas the City of Union City, Indiana operates a drinking water utility to provide and distribute drinking water throughout the city. And whereas the common council of the City of Union City, Indiana requires that deposits are made for water service, which, service wishes to allow waivers of deposits in certain specific limited cases. Therefore, be it ordained that Section 5333 of the Codified Ordances of City of Union City be amended to allow or add the following language. The city waterworks shall require a cash deposit from all applicants for service for each separate living unit in the amount provided by, in 5323 below. This deposit shall be applied to the water bill due at the termination of service, if any. The deposit or the balance due after payment shall be returned to the user upon termination of service. The deposit shall not bear interest during the period of time that the deposit is held by the city. And in italicized, this is what the new language is. The Board of Public Works and Safety may waive the required deposit for a nonprofit active 501(c)(3) group or an established religious organization upon request and after consideration by the Board, an acceptable presentation of facts. So in essence, that's what this is proposing.
I've got a question.
Shoot.
In regards to established religious organization, what are churches technically filed as? Are they, they're not a 501(c)(3)? I'm guessing there's something else.
They're, they have a religious designation.
Yeah, there's, I don't think it's not under 501(c)(3).
But it's another something.
Yeah, it's a very similar.
Could we put that exact thing in there instead of just religious organization?
Mr. Prankie, do you have any suggestions on that?
Yeah, we can, we can fill that in with a valid religious organization that is, well, established under, for purposes like property tax.
Yeah, whatever that law is.
Yeah, we could, we could put that in.
Because there could be people that are skirting the system, saying it's a religious organization. And they may be able to present facts that says they are. So.
Right.
If we go black and white with what the federal government accepts.
Yeah.
We shouldn't get us, get us in hot water.
Gives Board of Works the ability to make that decision based on that, that you have that documentation.
Right.
I'd like to see that.
Do I hear amendment to the, to a motion that you're wanting to make?
I would.
Hey, Chad?
Yes?
Just, I didn't hear anything about the school and, and you discussed that or the potential.
Oh, yes.
So you might want to, if you want to amend it, you might want to add.
That's a good point. The school would have ownership, say, for example, of another entity in town, potentially downtown.
About 150 yards that.
Yeah.
That might be paid as soon as we got to.
Yeah. No, just as consideration.
The school already has operating water.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But it's a new, it's a new service though, because it'll be in a.
It would be a new service because it'd be a new location.
That's right.
Service, right.
Right.
Okay.
Is it that much? Is the, is the? It's $100. The point is, the, the logic behind this was, when you have 501(c)(3)'s or, or nonprofit generating entities, that when you take $100 from them, in some instances, that could be, that could be a big thing. And it could be something that they could be paying it forward to do something else. The bad thing about a deposit, some of these entities, when they open up something, it sits there and does nothing, the deposit does. It's not like, because our word is like, are we grueling, are we doing something to our revenue? No, it has nothing to do with our revenue because it goes into a separate fund and doesn't get touched. So basically, it just sits in there and grows mold, you know, and it's for basically if somebody would skip town, obviously they're helping, you know, cover that. But that's not what the situations we're talking about. And so there, and it gives the Board of Works the right to address a situation by situation because we also don't want to just do a current blotch. Because if it's somebody that's never been in town before and they say, oh, yeah, we, we want to wait, well, they're not, they've not been a member of the community. But if we have somebody else in town that's been a member of the community for 100 years, an organization that's not-for-profit, then that by all accounts should warrant serious consideration that, that fee or wit, or deposit could be waived.
Well, and, and the original consideration is that, that an existing organization already has one deposit.
Exactly.
In place.
Exactly.
So if they, if they have this, this other, this other building, other service.
Right, right.
Their, their deposit still will, if they were default on that service.
They still have a deposit.
Still have a deposit.
Yes, exactly.
Is that clear in the, in the ordinance? I mean, I.
That's where, that's the part of giving the Board of Works the ability to take this on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Because it still falls under them because they get so waived, they don't have to prove any of them. But it gives them that governing authority.
So with this with works, the way, the way I read it is this 501(c)(3) would have to petition the Board of Works to waive the.
Correct.
Deposit.
Correct.
It's not that everybody that's 501(c)(3).
No, nor does this mean that everybody gets a, an automatic, you know, refund just by passing it.
But in like I said, the original spirit is that it's intended to be toward organizations that have one deposit.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's my position.
Yes.
Board of Works, I feel like even though it's this type of organization, there still should be a deposit in place. It's not necessarily multiple deposits.
Exactly, and that's part of the.
So my criteria is if a, a church organization or another organization comes in and wants to do this and, and originate a water service and only one, I still expect a deposit.
Right, exactly.
And that's, that's my interpretation as Board of Works.
And that, no, that's, that's a good point of clarity. In fact, you don't have, you're not seeking multiple deposits from the same 501(c)(3) or same not-for-profit.
You got to have the one.
Yeah, you have one, but you don't need three, four, five, you know.
Bob, does that suit the way you feel about it too? As, as having another member of Board of Works here.
Exactly.
Is that going to be clear in the ordinances?
Well, that's, we need to clarify that more. I mean, I think the Board of Works can handle that other than does the Board, does the, if 10 years from now, the Board of Works is potentially a different group. So do we need to make a clarification on, on additional deposits? I, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not, I forgot the wording.
Yes.
Is it in there?
What, is it in here? No, it has to be clarified.
Okay.
And just a point of information, it looks like most churches are already established as a 501(c)(3).
Okay, so this 501(c)(3) is what they're recognizing. I thought it was a different.
Do we need to amend that to, to refer to, to this as additional deposits?
When multiple, when more than one deposit is over, or something of that nature. Who wants to tackle this motion now? Jane, do you want us to?
Not on the floor. I would suggest that we just.
Rewrite.
You want to, you want to rework it a little bit?
That'd be easier.
Do you wanna, do you wanna re, 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 that's, I think that'd be better than us amending it right here on the floor.
I don't know if it's easier, sorry, Prinkie.
Changing ten to eleven is one thing, but.
No, yeah.
Or rewrite.
I don't think we're on schedule here for a deadline.
No, 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 no. I think, I think you've got the gist, there's just, yeah, it's like basically just one more sentence that needs put into it.
Like I say, we know it now, but like I say, I don't want the Board of Works to hear us to come to not have that clear.
That's fair, that's fair. Last one, or actually two more, one, city-owned properties to be demolished or rehabbed, and we discussed the last meeting about actually physically viewing these properties. I've had the chance to do that, and I sent a list, actually, Jan was very kind and included in the packets for you. The only update I have to this list will be six twenty-five West Oak, or West Hickory. I have checked with the homeowner, and that is actually not a rehab candidate.
So that's a demo?
That's a demo, yeah, so there would be ten demos of the fifteen.
So.
Six twenty-five West.
Correct.
A couple of questions.
Shoot.
Are these already owned by the city?
Two of them are, to my knowledge. You guys, you guys provide clarity and add my correct answer.
I don't have the list in front of me, but I believe it's two that are already. Well, that's, is that the list you sent out?
That's the list you gave to me.
That's why you tell me what the rest were in the condemnation.
Yes, correct.
I looked at the property records of each of these before the meeting, and I didn't see any of them owned by the city.
There's, there were supposed to have been two, but they're not.
Maybe they just haven't been, the property records did.
Yeah, they may not be.
All right, so I do, I do a, I was trying to, I was telling Mr. Elmore right before the meeting, we do a spreadsheet, and it's a working spreadsheet. So when the ordinance officer goes out and makes notices of any kind, it's put in a certain tab. And then you can also, you can follow live, basically, day by day, what this ordinance officer is doing. We started this like three years ago before positions changed, but that's where that actual list came from.
Correct.
So that's the list I'm talking about, I didn't even bring my phone tonight, so I can't open it up to look. But I do believe you're correct in saying that there are two, maybe three, off the top of my head, that were already city-owned. The rest are at Mr. Prinkie's office, and of course, with COVID, it kind of slowed things way down, but I do know we've got a lot of paperwork done on it, so yeah, we should be able to move right along.
Right.
So, I was just gonna say, who determined they're demolished?
No, that was my, we were, we were told, remember, we decided we were gonna go around, so that was my suggestion.
These are yours, okay, so they're not already, because I just saw a couple, needs evaluated, so I saw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is just, I think they're just suggestions right now.
Correct.
By Mayor.
Correct, that is correct.
What we do with these, these properties.
That is correct.
This is not where they're standing now in the process.
Right. There, now, there are three, there's a, there's a question, there are three, about four on those I would absolutely vehemently go to back to demolish. Just heads up. But, but there's others down there that I've suggested demolish, that I could definitely be talked off the ledge if you guys, you know, could raise good counterpoints.
And that list is gonna increase, I'm just throwing that out.
Oh, I'm sure it will.
Especially with what, you know, the new ordinance officer and the county board and stuff like that.
How are these properties actually making their way on the condemnation list? Is it basically something property inspection, as people are going through the property, that they make them way on a list? Or I guess, how does, how does that come about?
Well, just in a nutshell and briefly, because I have talked to the mayor about doing some educational things up here, where we would explain the ordinances and how the ordinances are actually enforced and what the process is. But with, to answer your question, basically, the ordinance officer goes out and about, and he may find an empty house that is just, you know, if you look at it, it's falling in on itself, and this and that and the other, and he starts making violations going. So, and with that being said, he makes notice of the violations. Those notices, he then tries to find an owner, which sometimes he can, sometimes he can't. He tries to notify them as much as he possibly can before the timeframe that's set in the ordinance itself. And then if that doesn't happen, they're in violation. So if it's to the point in those violations that it is recommended that it be demolished, then we go with the, you know, tearing it down, and then forward to Mr. Prinkie, who takes it through Superior Court. That in a nutshell is kind of the process for demolishing a house, that isn't what our goal is for every house, though. So there's a process for one fifties, one fifty-ones, those are the actual ordinance numbers, minimum housing standards, things like that, so. And if you guys are interested, you can shoot me an email, and I'll make sure that you all have that live thing that we work off of. Now, that is not gonna give a detailed report to you, it's not gonna say, oh, the window here is broke, the shingle's hanging. But what it will say is, on this date, it was noticed for, say, condemnation, or noticed for grass too tall, or notice, and it'll give the actual ordinance number itself, and you will see that live when he updates it. Or you should, that's the way it's supposed to work. But I'm not a techie, so I try to make it work as best as possible. Thank you.
Any thoughts? Well, my suggestion would be that we, number, the number one on the demo list, which, this is one we do not own yet, I don't believe, it's three fifty-five South Columbia. A, a backhoe and a strong wind will take care of that property. It's, you know what I'm talking about, it's the woods, it looks like a modular, I can't, I don't know what's in there, fucking modular. It's really rough, and that whole corner just needs and it's, it's not fair to those property owners down there, it's just not. It's, it's deplorable, it's shameful, it's, yeah.
It's been open to this.
Yeah, well, and it's also, it's inviting problems, it really is. So it needs to be an open lot right now that could maybe be developed on the road or something. So that would be my number one move, suggestion to move quickly on. And then the one, the other one is, the one sitting across from Wesley United Methodist Church on Oak Street, it's cockeyed. Part of the house is actually.
The duplex?
Yeah, the big gray house right, yeah. Yeah, that one.
Next to Hoosier Place?
Yes, correct, right next to Hoosier Place, that one is.
That's getting out.
Yeah, those are the, I had those as one and two on this demo list. Outside of that, again, if we could at least move on those two in some way, our guys can take care of number one.
What about the two twenty-eight West Oak, I thought that was number three, and that's kind of in the downtown area.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, as the houses go, five twenty is West Oak, five, I'm sorry, I should clarify. Five twenty West Oak is the second house on the list, but five, two twenty is listed as number two overall, but that's the down, correct, the downtown building, that, yes, that is sits by what used to be behind Joe's Corner Floors, before that building burned.
That needs to go.
And that, that unless somebody has some outstanding idea on how that, because, yeah, it's I mean, it would be great to see it rehabbed, but I don't know, yeah, I don't know who would want to tackle that.
Well, one of the things you weigh in this, this discussion Nathan and I have had various times, just have a conversation, is that you have some structures that might be structurally better than others, but their viability is, is.
Location's terrible.
Location, the type of, type of structure, so that they're not viable either. So that's one of the things, like the, like the five twenty Oak is definitely in that kind of category where it's, while I suppose it's probably savable, if you want to spend enough money on it, but it's, it's completely not feasible.
No, exactly, yeah, yeah, you'd go for half a million dollars if you could save it, but nobody's ever gonna get their money back.
I think we need to put together like an actual process, because we can't even do anything with these, because the owner's not signed it over. So let's not put the cart in front of the horse, let's go with the three the city owns.
Legal, isn't there a legal?
Yeah, but the courts are held up, they already have all the paperwork filed, but the courts are closed. So what about the three or four that the city owns, can we?
Which ones are those?
I don't, they're not marked on these, that's why I'm sorry.
I should bring my phone to read that.
No, you're good.
Mr. Elmore has that ability to pull that up or not. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I can't remember which ones, ones we already.
I know of two, but I don't know if they're on that list.
The one by Hoosier Place, I know for sure is one of them, I believe also down by.
I didn't think Hoosier Place was actually city-owned, though.
I think it's been through the.
Are we five twenty West Oak?
I want to say Mulberry or Sycamore.
Sycamore.
Still, there was a process on the.
And then I think there's one on Pearl.
Rural development.
Rural development, so that's gonna dictate.
Uh.
Six twenty-seven Pearl.
I don't, no. No, it would be in the five hundred block. See, that one's not on.
That is, that is the one by Hoosier Place, it's actually two addresses, right?
You're talking Oak Street.
Oh, okay.
Oak Street and Pearl Street, basically, they're right down the alley from each other, yes. My understanding is the city already owns those two, the one on Pearl and the one on Oak.
On the alley.
I'm not sure about the one on Oak, I thought that guy was making a stink with the courts, but I'm.
Was somebody wanted?
That's what I thought.
Sid and scene or something?
Yeah, tried to.
Didn't know it was condemned, or was not told it was condemned.
Correct.
But can we use the three that we currently own and create a process? So when we actually get these through the courts, we can just kind of hit the ground running?
Well, I agree for like number one, anything we can demo ourselves, yes. Anything we can demo ourselves, absolutely, but for the other homes, to Tim's point, we're waiting on rural development, hopefully with the, with our grant application for demolition, which would help change the complexion of what we can do on a lot of these immediately. But my push or my ask of you guys would be, the ones that we can acquire or already have and can demo ourselves, if it's feasible, then that's, I say that would be our next step, that would be our first step.
I like that.
Yeah, I think this. So what about instances where there's back taxes owed on these properties, if we were to acquire them, are we responsible for the back taxes?
No.
No.
No?
They get wiped off.
But you, okay.
So basically, the Sycamore property and the Pearl Street property could potentially, that's not the same one, that's a different one.
Is that a different one?
Yeah, because I was trying to drive by these on the, on the list earlier today, too, and I was like, well, there's a couple that I.
Which one he was talking about? Probably just tax to be, Pearl, the Pearl Street on the alley where they said Sycamore, and I'm not sure which one he was talking about, Sycamore.
It's in between Hickory Street and Vision.
Six, that's, that's a story, that house that was voluntarily surrendered by the property owner to the city.
Yeah.
I know we own that one.
Okay.
And the utilities department spoke to about doing the demo.
Okay. Yeah, it's a very small structure, and it's, is it wooded? Is that the one I'm thinking of, or is that the one on, no, that's the one on Shore Island.
It's, it's got a lot of brush, growing up, kind of through the.
Through, yeah.
And so forth. Brad's, and I'm, I don't want to speak to Brad directly, but I think his major concern on that was the probability of maybe some asbestos in the asphalt shingles that are on the outside of the house, which you know, we can get that tested and deal with it, but I think that's kind of where it died when he started asking some questions like that before he started demoing.
So in other words, asbestos test, get that remedied, and then drop it.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, should we put like a checklist together before we go at, like, let's go at the first one and see what problems we're gonna run into, and let's create a one-page checklist of
Right.
what needs to be ticked off before we start going at each one of these.
Be legit to.
And then it's, hey, look, property X Y Z has already gone through the checklist, now it's ready for demo.
Yeah, on X date.
Yeah.
How about the old police department?
Uh, that's a whole different meeting.
It's a long meeting.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, we do need to address that, but that's. Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll come up with a checklist of what we think, and we'll run it by you for the next meeting of, and get your guys' thoughts on it and greenlight it for what we need to make sure we have marked or done or inspected or verified.
Utilities disconnected, asbestos testing.
Yep.
Removal of any objects that are not going to wherever, a landfill, or the dump, or wherever we're gonna do it.
Yep.
That's just a couple of small things.
Yeah. And there's about three properties on here that we could probably do that easily ourselves, without spending a dollar.
I'm great at demo, you guys need help, I'll happily help an afternoon today. Putting it back together, I'm not very good, but.
Um, okay, and then last on the list is a change order number three from the wastewater project. I don't know, did you? Tim, you were a part of the Board of Works meeting, I don't know if you want to speak to this, I've got the changes suggested here, if you don't have it in front of you.
Well, the first one is the.
The one was adding potable water lines to the existing wastewater treatment plant.
And that was, that was, the way that was done, it was not included in the original numbers, because it was not an absolute sure thing at the time that the, that the bid was done, everything was done, that that would be, that we'd have that water line run to the wastewater plant and be able to do that, so that was was, was planned to be done with, out of contingencies, as opposed to in the original funding plan. And I don't know if that was exactly clear, I can't even say if that was exactly clear that way to us as council, but we did have some discussion on that, but, so that was, that's why it's an additional, but it's always been part of the plan. And then, the number two was, there's a pretty serious bank near the digester that would have an erosion problem. It caused a bit of a problem without doing anything with it, so that was to add some riprap stone on the, on the bank at that location. And, see, then there's just a, just that one deduct of removing, remitting the curb and retaining wall and sidewalk at the EQ, which is, what, two hundred dollars? So total of fifty-one nine forty-six, the bulk of it's the pot of the water lines, and that's plumbing water lines to all the buildings and also outside hydrants in two locations.
And again, this is, in terms of the project, there were contingencies that were built into this project, but this, we still, even with this.
We're still under.
We're still under.
I had that question if you were.
Yeah, we're still, even with this approval, we're still well under.
Not even.
Yeah, what I mean. But we don't like broadcasting that, because.
Technically, we're ten months from completion, too, and we're still under, so there's still room for error.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And things have gone very well and very smoothly.
Yeah, yeah.
Still on schedule, still, fantastic contractor.
Which is, yeah, they really have, it's been.
You know, if, if you guys were, not, Bob, you definitely remember, but if you saw anything, we had some concerns about, it was because we weren't familiar with the company, we had some concerns, the, the engineers got assurance that they were a good company, and I'll tell you what, they've been excellent. And, and they're a little smaller company than some, so some of the bureaucracy isn't there. And I can attest to that, as being a little vendor from time to time with them, is that they're very nice to work with.
That's awesome.
So.
That's awesome.
So I think we really did well with that.
That's awesome. I would certainly entertain a motion for the change order as presented to council for the wastewater treatment project.
My move, we approve the change order for fifty-one thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars for the wastewater treatment plant.
We have a first, we have a second.
I second.
Jan, would you take a roll call vote?
Brandon Downborn?
Yes.
Bosley?
Yes.
Nathan Condon?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Tita Fries?
Yes.
All right. There's no visitors, so I will, the day of the next council meeting will actually be Monday, this is important, Monday, June eighth, because the next meeting actually falls on Memorial Day. So we will not meet again until June eighth at six P M. God willing, we will be having spring-like or summer-like weather by then. And the day of the next Board of Public Works will be also Monday, June eighth at one P M. I would hereby entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a first, we have a second.
I'll say.
All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
You can adjourn.